Like to call the April first, twenty twenty four County Commissioner Meeting to order. And I want to welcome everyone that's here. Now, we've got four associates with the county that have retired or getting ready to retire. And we're gonna do some recognition here in just a minute. And I know some of their family members are here, so welcome to this County Commissioner Meeting. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Brandon King for our invocation and pledge of allegiance.
If you would bow your heads, please. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight. Thank you for all you've done for us. Thank you for this past week of Easter. We enjoyed celebrating you. Please be with everyone here tonight as they conduct business of the county and provide safe travels to and from for everyone here. In Jesus's name, we pray, amen.
Thank you, Commissioner King. At this time, I would ask commissioners to look over the agenda. And is there any adjustments or approval for the agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Eifert.
I would like to pull item number six, the Indy School Edition Project, a budget amendment from tonight's agenda.
I have a motion to pull it from the agenda tonight. Is there a second?
Second.
Multiple seconds, Peter? Okay. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just start, please. You know, this is something that we are all passionate about, but we also have to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollars. And we've asked for transparency on this issue. This was on the meeting last time, and they couldn't get anybody here. And we've requested somebody to be here this time to present. They would not get anybody here again, so we have asked once again. So, you know, we have allocated the money and opened before, and we have no problem spending this money, as long as we know the money's being spent responsibly. And we want to make sure that's happening, and we've requested several times. So, that's the reason that I'm for this motion.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, my concern is, you know, where me, myself, Commissioner Lohhan, and Commissioner Barbie are on the Facilities Committee, and we know the needs, and we've been meeting for well over a year on this, on this subject. And, you know, we have to be good stewards of the money. And this was on the agenda for our last meeting, but what happened was they didn't pick the lowest bidder for the contract. It was like the fifth lowest bidder that they, they selected to do the addition at Indy. And the person who was the lowest bidder, he sent us an all letters asking why he didn't get the bid or something. And then, all of a sudden, he pulled his bid, and now they're asking for a third contractor to, to get approval for. And we just have a lot of questions as to what happened, why it happened, how it happened. And, um, you know, we did, we just have questions. I feel it's like Commissioner King said, to be responsible stewards of y'all's money is to make sure it's being spent properly and especially they're utilizing the money proper, properly that we approved.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. Anyone else? Let's vote all in favor of pulling the Indy School Project item off of the agenda. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And Commissioner Crump is with us on the phone, and she voted also with the majority. At this time, we have some retirement award presentations, and I'm gonna step down to the front and read the bios of these fine employees. You can hear me, I know. All right. And as I call your name, I'm gonna do this one at a time. And Pat Fesperman, how about coming up here with me? I've known Pat a long time. I'm not gonna say how many years, but a long time. Yeah. Get you to turn around and face the audience. Pat Fesperman started working for Stanley County Tax Office in January nineteen ninety. At that time, the office was split into the Tax Assessor and the Tax Collector's Division. Pat worked in the Tax Collection Division for thirty-three years, and I can vouch, she's probably collected my taxes for a good part of that. Yeah, she also helped in the Tax Assessor's Division in personal property when the office was short-staffed and behind on processing listing forms. And I think listing forms were all due January thirty-first, I think. After thirty-three years of commitment to Stanley County, Pat decided to retire and enjoy spending time with her family. Pat has a wealth of knowledge and very good at her job. Stanley County is very fortunate to have an employee do the same job for so many years and be so dependable and effective each day. She made huge contributions in helping the Tax Collector's Office attain the highest collection rate ever in the last few years. Pat is married to Jack Fesperman. Jack, if you would, please stand. And together, they have three sons, Daniel, Mark, and Jason. Are by chance any of those here? No, that's okay. All right, she also has one grandson, little Daniel, that she absolutely adores. And if she's like most grandparents, if she'd had him first, there wouldn't have been three other sons. On behalf of Stanley County Tax Administration and Stanley County citizens, we say, thank you, job well done. You will be missed. Is Tracy Presson here? Tomorrow, I'm gonna wonder who's running the county. I mean, we got four good ones retiring. How you doing? Yeah, come on up here. Tracy's worked for the Stanley County Department of Social Services for thirty years. The county must be a good place to work because there are a lot of people that work here for a long period of time. She started as a Program Assistant One in the Administrative Unit in nineteen ninety-four. In nineteen ninety-seven, Tracy was promoted to a Program Support Assistant Two, now known as Administrative Assistant Two. After her promotion, she supervised the Administrative Unit along with numerous other duties. She has always been a very dependable, hard-working employee and will be greatly missed by her coworkers. Tracy is a daughter of Norman and Judy Hartzell. She is married to Todd Presson. Todd, are you here? Is he here? Yeah, how about standing? Come on. All right, there's Todd. Uh, let's see. Uh, they have two children, Brittany and Austin, along with three grandsons. In her retirement, Tracy plans to spend lots of time with her grandchildren and traveling. We wish you well.
Thank you.
God bless you. Let me give you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Oh. Here, let's open the bag.
Yeah, yeah, just, just real quick.
That's the quarter after six. All right. Here's your box. Let me give you this box. And here's your bag. Thank you for what you've done. Y'all wanna join me down here? I hear you. Stacy Ragstall. Come on up here. Yeah, come on down. Yeah. First of all, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah. Stacy Ragstall began her career at DSS in nineteen ninety-four. Her position was Program Support Assistant in the Daycare Unit. The following year, she moved into an Income Maintenance Case Worker Position in the Adult Medicaid Unit. Stacy was promoted to Supervisor for Adult Medicaid in two thousand fifteen. Stacy served as a strong leader for her staff and has seen many challenges from system issues and ever-changing policies and procedures. I'm surprised, I'm surprised they changed any policies, but. She has kept a positive attitude and been encouraging to her staff. Under her direction, the Adult Medicaid Unit has worked well as a team and exceeded standards for accuracy and timeliness. Stacy has helped to mentor other supervisors and will be missed for her friendship and helping nature. She is married to Curtis Ragstall and has two children, Brandon and Madison. Stacy will surely be busy in her retirement, for it is not her nature to just sit around. She plans to spend lots of time at the beach in her retirement. All her friends at DSS wish her well. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it too. Okay, this might be good. I went to church a long time ago. God bless you. Let me give you this box. Yeah, and we do appreciate you. Robin Shaver. The Holback Rose with her, huh? All right. If y'all belong to Robin, stand up. How you doing? Yeah, good, I'm doing good, yeah. Okay, all right, a lot of smiling faces back there. Let me get my bifocals in line here. It says, Robin began working for Stanley County Emergency Services on April fifteenth, nineteen ninety-six as a Program Support Specialist Assistant One. During her career, she advanced to her current role as Senior Administrative Specialist, which is a fancy term for her actual role of office mom. Robin was raised on a tobacco farm in Anson County, where she grew up with eight siblings. The work ethic instilled by her parents, as well as the playful torturing at the hands of her brothers, prepared her well for her career in emergency services. I'm sure it did. During her tenure, Robin has worked with four different emergency service directors, seven EMS managers, and three fire marshals. You train them all well. Okay, she has worked many emergency operations center activations during hurricanes, tornadoes, winter storms, and flooding events to help ensure the safety and well-being of the citizens and property of Stanley County. In addition to serving Stanley County, Robin has also served the North Carolina Emergency Management Association Executive Board as Secretary since two thousand twelve. As dedicated to her profession as Robin has been, she has been even more dedicated to her family. Robin and her husband Donald have been married for forty-five years, as of today. Happy anniversary. Together, they have had two children, daughter Stacy Ragstall, who was just up here. Yeah, all right, and her husband Curtis, and son Matt Shaver and his wife Elizabeth. They have seven grandchildren, Brandon Ragstall and his wife Alexa, Madison Ragstall, Jackson Shaver, Isabella Shaver, Caroline Shaver, and Jamison Shaver. Did I get those right? Hope I did. Robin has been a, a constant claim, claiming, calming, excuse me, calming presence in the Emergency Service Office. She has been a friend, confidant, adoptive mother, and grandmother, a voice of reason. And when needed, she will tell you what you need to hear. And everybody needs somebody like that. Tell you what you need to hear. Um, let's see. Yeah. Robin's experience, demeanor, and love will be greatly missed. We wish her all the happiness in her retirement and congratulate her on her final being able to, when it snows, sit in her recliner, look out her window, and look at the snow. Instead of being cooped up in a cramped, windowless, emergency office building that which she's in, congratulations on your retirement, and thank you for all you have done. Congratulations. And let me give you the box that it goes in. There you go, you got it, okay. All right, let's give all these associates a good hand. Okay, next, we have public comments tonight, and we have Mr. Roddy Dowd with Charlotte Pipe gonna come up here and give us an update on what's happening in Oakboro at Charlotte Pipe and Foundry. Roddy?
Bill and other commissioners, thank y'all for having me here tonight. Um, quite frankly, I didn't know I was gonna make any comments until Bill called on me, but it gives me a great opportunity to say thank you to the county for all the support over the last four years. As we began work in Oakboro, as y'all know, it took us about three years to build the facility, and we had tremendous support from the county. We went live on nine eleven this past fall, so we've been at it just a little short of six months and are at full production, and things are going really well. We've got a couple of minor pieces of equipment that are being brought online this month, but for all intents and purposes, everything's a hundred percent. I'm pleased to tell you that with a lot of good support out of Andy's group, we finished the project on budget and on time. We spent about four hundred and sixty million dollars on building the plant, and we have five hundred and fifty employees, give or take two or three. I hadn't seen the month-end report. Our agreement, under our Economic Development Agreement with y'all that we executed four years ago, said that we would invest three hundred and sixty million dollars and have three hundred and fifty jobs. So, I think we exceeded that, and obviously, we'll be contributing our fair share of taxes along the way and are delighted to do that. I think this is a wonderful, we've got plants, ten plants around the United States, building one right now in, in Kansas. And doing business here has been a really great pleasure. The, the county, the town of Oakboro, were super to work with. We had no lost time waiting on inspections and, you know, normal nonsense you get, particularly in a place, the bigger towns like Charlotte. So, it was great. I will also acknowledge, I know y'all are gonna be talking about the road closure tonight, and I appreciate your consideration of that. That was part of our Economic Development Agreement dated May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, between the county and Oakboro. And it says in part there, "The parties acknowledged that the closure of Lighthouse Road is critical to the construction of the facility, and the facility cannot be constructed without such closure." Most of Lighthouse Road, which Bill knows, because he grew up around there, it was kind of a glorified pig path before, you know, we built the plant. It's been paved, and Oakboro has acknowledged, you know, voted for abandonment, and they own the biggest part of that. We think it's important for the safety of our employees, the safety of people in the county, to close it down. There is an active railroad crossing there now, which, you know, by closing it, and we have it gated and stuff per the agreement, we'll make, make sure that everybody's in, in safe order. So, that's, that's kind of a high-level report. Things are going really well, and we're delighted to be in Stanley County. We've continued to buy land around the Foundry and have about seven hundred acres, which we put, kept in its normal agricultural or forested condition with no plans for change. I think that the future for the county is great. I've recently forwarded a lead to Andy's office in Candace on a large manufacturer who we've recommended come to the county, and I hope that we can snag those. And I certainly intend to be a salesman for Stanley County henceforth. But anyway, that's, that's a high-level update. Are there any questions from the commissioners?
Any questions? Just a comment, we appreciate your commitment of what you would do, and you surpassed it. And we are glad that Charlotte Pipe and Foundry is located in Stanley County in Oakboro, North Carolina.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you. One quick question?
Yes, sir.
The train, there's talk now about the train holding up the thing. Does that have anything to do with you guys or anything?
No.
The train is like, what's the situation with the train down there? That's just what people are asking me.
No, no, and, and that's a great question. Actually, we, I live down Rocky River Road on Sandbar Road, so I get caught in that same train traffic. There's a, Aberdeen has a, a big switching facility and, and freight transfer facility right there off of Main Street and where two oh five comes in at the new intersection down there. And they, they do, do a lot of switching, a lot of loading there. And when they do, they will oftentimes block the end of Main Street all the way down to Buster and two oh five. And that's on the normal east-west freight that they have. The freight that we have goes down the road towards Eighth Street and then goes on our spur, which is entirely on our land. And the only crossing is the one across Lighthouse, which of course is on the Oakboro property. So, that's, that's quite frankly, an Aberdeen issue. And I know the town of Oakboro is keeping a stopwatch on them. And they're good people. It's a privately-owned business, and I think that's just something that, you know, and I, I'm certainly willing to provide introductions, because they do move a lot of, we move a lot of freight, but it's not the, the area that you're hearing about down near the food line and stuff, which is a little bit painful. But yeah, that's, since we're the biggest employer there, you know, obviously, and we do have rail freight coming in there, people sometimes think it's us, but what I would tell them is just take a look to the right if they're going south, and they'll see all the activity, and that, that's what the issue is there. Does that help?
Oh, yeah, 'cause I drove down there the other day just to take a look at everything, and I saw where the trains were going that way. I saw the big train house, and it's like, I didn't think that had much to do with you guys over there, but I know how small rumors spread and become an unfounded reality in this, in this county.
Commissioner, as you know, rumors have an ability to expand. Um, Commissioner Aschudo, um, rumors have, uh, an ability to ex- expand, uh, more than most gases do. So, um, I've, I, I would tell you, most of the commissioners here, um, tonight have my personal cell phone number. And if there's ever a question about Charlotte Pipe, they can call me, they can call Brett Barbie, who's a, uh, town councilman in Oakboro. And, uh, I'll always shoot straight with them. Um, and, uh, we're gonna be a good citizen there and, you know, I, I get to put up with the train just like everybody else in Oakboro. So, we get it worked out. If I can help y'all, we know the people that own the thing, so.
Thank you, Roddy.
Alright. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is Autism Acceptance Month proclamation. And we have Dee Panky and Lori Ivy is the presenter. Welcome, ladies.
Good evening Chair, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners and staff. Um, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight, um, and on the agenda is Beth Oliveri. But as you see, it's Dee Panky Thompson. And, um, she's gonna share a little bit about autism and GHA on behalf of GHA Autism Supports. And then, um, I'll read the proclamation of this county of Stanley.
Good evening. I'm Dee Panky Thompson and I serve as VP and Chief Quality Services Officer for GHA Autism Supports. Again, I'm joined by Lori Ivy, who serves as our Development Coordinator. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to join you this evening as we kick off April as Autism Acceptance Month. World Autism Awareness Day is observed every year on April second, which is tomorrow. In an effort to raise public awareness of autism, this day was first established by the United Nations in two thousand and eight. Did you know about one in thirty-six children have been identified with autism spectrum disorder according to the two thousand twenty-one estimates from the CDC? Autism is about four times more prevalent in boys than girls. There are forty thousand individuals and their families living in North, uh, North Carolina, receiving direct services related to autism. There are about five point four million adults living in the United States with autism. If we take a look at our organization and the local impact that GHA Autism Supports make, we have been in existence for forty-six years since nineteen seventy-eight. We started out as a one, five-bed children's residential home that was home to five children with autism that operated on a budget of about seventy-eight thousand dollars annually. We now have a budget of over sixteen million that operates over twenty programs right here in Stanley County. We currently serve over one hundred individuals with autism. And do you know the economic impact that GHA Autism Supports makes for our county? We are the largest autism specialty provider in the state of North Carolina. We are one of the top fifteen employers in Stanley County that currently employs two hundred and sixty-five individuals. Finally, our team at GHA is proud to showcase our organization to visitors from all over the world, including autism professionals from Japan, Germany, Denmark and Canada. Many Stanley County residents may not realize the crown jewel that we have in our very own backyard. Again, Lori and I, and on behalf of our agency, we appreciate the opportunity to promote autism acceptance during this special time and to educate our community about the programs we provide. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori, you gonna read the resolution?
Unless you want to.
You go right ahead. I, I've already read enough tonight.
Okay, so the proclamation of the county of Stanley, whereas we recognize the culture of autism as a unique, unique way of being and strive to be inclusive community equal for all citizens. Whereas autism may impact an individual's social behavior and communication in a variety of ways and knows no racial, ethnic and social boundaries. Whereas we are dedicated to expanding possibilities and providing access to services and supports to enable individuals with autism to reach their fullest potential. Whereas we pledge to promote residential health, employment and social opportunities for ended, individuals of all abilities. Whereas we recognize the importance of empowering individuals with autism to live lives of dignity, self-determination and respect. Whereas we value and celebrate the gifts and contributions of our neurodiverse community members. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the county of Stanley joins the United Nations and the US government in proclaiming the month of April to be designated as Autism Acceptance Month. As a symbol of our commitment to create a culture of diversity, inclusion and equity for all members.
I make a motion we approve the proclamation.
And we have a motion to approve the proclamation that Lori just read. Do we have a second? Okay, Commissioner Hatley, a second. Any other comments, discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion, any opposed? Motion carries, seven oh. Thank y'all for the presentation.
Thank you again for your support.
And we, we do appreciate what GHA does in Stanley County.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is, uh, Agriculture District Program Application, Molly Alexa. Hey Molly.
Good evening Commissioners. The pollen's about got the best of me. But, um, the Ag Board met last month and we have two applications that they've recommended, um, to the Commissioners for approval. The first one, um, they're both, um, located in the north, um, part of the county. Um, is from Thomas Whitley, Linda Whitley, Barry Whitley and Kami Whitley. It's a hundred and fifty-two point two-one acres. Um, so that's the first one that needs your approval.
Any questions, Molly? Do we have a motion? First and a second. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, seven oh.
Thank you Commissioners. Alright, the second one is, um, owned by Thomas Whitley and Linda Whitley and is fifteen point seven-five acres.
I make a motion we approve their application.
Commissioner Aschudo made the motion to approve, second by, uh, Commissioner King. Any questions, discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven oh. Thank you Molly.
Good evening.
Next is, uh, our county manager presenting the North Carolina DOT Resolution on Lighthouse Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The last time this item was presented, I made some assumptions regarding everyone's knowledge of our performance agreement with Charlotte Pipe. And there were several members of the board that weren't here in May of twenty twenty, um, when that agreement was approved. And so as such, I did not provide enough information to help the board make an informed decision and for that, I'm sorry. Um, the NCO DT, NC DOT has requested a resolution from the county to abandon a portion of Lighthouse Road adjacent to the Charlotte Pipe, uh, property on, in Oakboro, um, consistent with General Statutes one thirty-six sixty-three. Uh, so Charlotte Pipe can maintain this section of road. Um, there's a map, uh, of the specific area to be, uh, abandoned within the packet. Uh, per the county's Economic Development Agreement, Section six D, uh, with Charlotte Pipe executed in May of twenty twenty, the county must work to promptly process Charlotte Pipe's request to close a portion of Lighthouse Road. And I've also attached a, a, an email from Steve Hunting, uh, with Parker Poe, who was Charlotte Pipe's attorney, um, as a reference. Um, also I've included a, the town of Oakboro's resolution around the abandonment of the, uh, Lighthouse Road, which, um, resides in, with inside their corporate limits and jurisdiction. Um, so that's the item before you this evening and I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions of County Manager Lucas? Okay.
County Manager Lucas, I, I had had a lot of phone calls over the last month or so of concerned citizens about the legality of government officials or state or whatever giving away a public highway. And, uh, that was my concern, not the fact that it was been, it's been given to Charlotte Pipe. It could have been given to Joe's Garage, it wouldn't have made any difference. But, uh, that's my concern, i- is the legality. Uh, I know they have a general statute that they brought up. I have pulled that general statute and read it. And the statute says that a petition by individuals or the county commissioners can act alone to request a resolution from the North Carolina DOT about releasing the highway. This is going in reverse form. This is the state asking us. I understand this was part of a bargaining agreement that was carried on, uh, and I'm not an injection to the road so much as I am the way the bargaining went, uh, that what authority these, uh, uh, people have for the council, the county, the state, whatever, in obtaining the road. So, I don't have a problem with who got the road, I just got a problem with the way it went about being, uh, taken over.
Any other questions? What's the pleasure to board?
I make a motion that we approve the resolution. I don't think we've made.
Okay, Commissioner Aschudo, do we have a second? Commissioner Hatley, second. Any other discussion before we vote?
Yeah, I just wanna tell you why I'm changing my vote from the last time. Cause a lot of times you vote how you vote based on the information you have on hand at the time. And I did have some concerns, it's almost like we're going backwards with the process, especially with, um, the board seems to have wanting community impact every time that DOT does, does things. And, um, it is what it is and it just happened the way it happened and, um, I'm gonna switch my vote to that. And just wanna do a defense of the DOT. I keep hearing commissioners make the comment, the DOT is gonna do what the DOT is gonna do. And I, I just cringe every time I hear that, cause I'm on the Rocky River Rural Planning Organization. And those guys with the DOT, they are professionals and we sit through those meetings and they take recommendations from the different municipalities that have representatives there. And they tweak it, alter it and do things like that. So I just wish, I mean, I know people could say what they want, but I wish, I wish members of the board would not make statements like that in the future.
Are we ready to vote? Okay, all in. Yes. Commissioner Crump?
Yes, um, I'm going to be changing my vote as well. And I, I just want it to be stated, uh, on the record that I'm changing my vote because I, I did not have enough information as well and did not realize that this had been negotiated, um, and was a done deal in twenty twenty. And so with respect to the process, I'm act, I'm going to, uh, support that absolutely. Um, and plus I understand there's safety issues with the big trucks and there's an active railroad. So, um, I'm in agreement and I just wanna make that clear.
Okay, go ahead and make a statement.
I won't be changing my vote, not because of the way it was, of who got it or whatever. I'm still in disagreement with the way it went about obtaining it. Uh, and I've got so many people out there that support me that, uh, don't think that it has the right for DOT to, to take a road that has been maintained by the public for a hundred-plus years. And it, to, uh, take something away from the public to give it to anyone. And so that's the reason I'm not gonna change my vote, but I do, I do support them.
Anything else before we vote? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say aye. So, we got, we got, uh, five for, two against, two against. Our Commissioner King, Vice Chairman Barbie, motion passes five to two. Thank you. Continue on.
Um, the next item I have this evening as a result of the, um, ND School Project item being tabled is a, uh, department, um, ad presentation. And I'm going to focus on central admin this evening and really just focus on our capital projects. Uh, and provide an update on several capital projects that we're, um, that we're working on, uh, for the board. First, one of these projects is the livestock arena, um, oops. So the livestock arena, it's, um, building construction should be complete in May of twenty twenty-four. Um, everything's progressing well. Weather has slowed it down a little bit in terms of, um, there was, um, some utilities that had to be connected to the site and, um, onsite grading. So that has slowed it, uh, in some respects. Um, there is also an audio, or we're, we've gotta do a formal RFP for the audio visual for the facility because the equipment will cost over ninety thousand dollars, uh, whereas anticipated to based on estimates we've gotten. And so we'll have to do a formal, um, RFP for, um, the audio visual. So that will come before you at some point in the future, uh, once we can get that out. Um, a boundary fence, uh, to contain the livestock, um, we'll have to bring this before you at some point in the future too. Um, because there are, obviously with the types of livestock that could be at this facility, it's be important to have, um, the, this, this property, um, or portion of our, not the whole entire Ag Civic Center property, but the property adjacent to the livestock arena, uh, at least fenced. That was something in Union County that they did after the fact and had a, had, had a livestock run away from a, from a, from a, an event. And so they ended up going back in and, and putting in fencing. And so, um, it'll be a question of whether or not you wanna install metal bleachers. Some, you know, metal bleachers may be something we can do and we can add in and phase in over time. Um, the concrete bleachers are, are staggered, so you can sit on them. But in terms of comfort, you know, having the metal bleachers on those, on top of the concrete may be com- more comfortable. And so that may not be something we don't have to do immediately to get the facility open, but maybe something the board wants to consider o- over time. Cause certainly folks could bring their own, you know, a lot of folks bring those, um, chairs that sit on the metal bleachers or they'll bring a cushiony thing, they can set that on the concrete now and, and be able to sit. But, um, that may be something we wanna do. Also, the, you know, there's gonna be equipment for the events, tractor, um, to be able to grade the, grade the arena or compact it depending on what kind of event you have, implements that will be associated with the tractor, gates, fencing, tables, chairs, carts, et cetera. We are seeking a, um, a, a several, um, several thousand dollar, a hundred thousand dollars, several hundred thousand dollar grant from the North Carolina Ag Trust Fund. We actually had a grant from the Ag Trust Fund previously and we had to, we had to turn it back because the project wasn't moving forward at that time. And so our, our two and a half year window had expired. But we're, we are, um, back in that process. We actually have a call with the granting agency on, um, April eighteenth. And so hopefully that will, um, move forward in a positive manner. And some of these things like the tractor, the implements, the gates, fencing, tables, chairs, um, boundary fence, things, things like that will be able to be paid for with that, those grant funds. Um, we'll also obviously, you know, seek opportunities for folks to sponsor, you know, maybe a, a local, um, company that may wanna, you know, put a, you know, loan a tractor for a period of time, just to be able to splash their, um, um, their business on the side of that and advertise, um, for, for a period of several months. So there could be, there could, there, there are opportunities here to do, um, you know, some, um, some, find, find some ways to not use county funding. But overall, this project's moving forward. We have hired a new, um, Events Facilities Director that will start on April fifteenth, who's, um, Chris Lambert, our, on the current, he's not our employee, he's the Convention and Visitors Bureau employee. Um, he'll start there on, on April fifteenth and begin the process of, um, getting everything in place and helping, helping to get this facility open. Um, and so more to come, um, as we, as he gets in place and we, we look at, you know, um, ribbon cuttings and, you know, maybe some, some events initially to, to, to have out there. So, um, we'll, we'll continue to update the board. But they're looking at sometime in May that that building will be, you know, available for the county to take over. Um, the SCC Trades Facility, um, building construction scheduled to be completed in mid-May, twenty twenty-four. There's likely that there'll be punch list items that will remain in May and even into June. Um, there's some outstanding items. The Community College has to re- relocate furniture, fixtures and equipment from their Trades Facility at the bottom of the hill up to this new facility. And so there are, there's a lot of coordination that still has to happen once they can get to a place where the facility is ready for them. So, um, goal is to be operational by fall of twenty twenty-four, but that's a, there's, that window's getting tighter and tighter. Um, hopefully we can, we will make it, but, um, I think. Hopefully, we can, we'll make it, but I think the Community College has some concerns over whether or not we can, we can get there. And so, but that, that facility's coming along. It's, they've made progress. And when, when you're up there next week for the joint meeting, there'll be an opportunity to tour that can go into the facility. They'll, they'll have hard hats available and make tours available for, for the board. Likely what it'd be is coming up there before the meeting and, and getting a tour. The North Carolina Emergency Training Center, and I do have some pictures here that are actually part of a, a website. So they're, they're, the Office of State Fire Marshal has actually set up a website where you can actually go out in there. And I'm going to update this occasionally about the project. But you can kind of see, this first picture shows generally what the layout will be for the site that's currently under construction. This is considered phase one. This will be the Swift Water Rescue Facility and the Aircraft Rescue Facility. This is the site that's currently being graded sort of adjacent and across the street from the Albemarle Correctional Facility. And then the second, which will be phase two, is the dormitory, the warehouse, their office building with their training office. And we'll also, that's where we'll place our nine-one-one EOC building. Four B and four A is actually the nine-one-one EOC building, which will be adjacent to the warehouse, which will allow us to co-locate some things in that warehouse as well as have a decontamination area for our fire marshal. So when, or emergency management. So when they come off of scenes and have soot and other things on them, they can, they can dispose of that in an area. So they're not tracking that through the building. And then the back of that will be hopefully a burn village type of thing in a collaboration, hopefully with our Community College in the, in the future. And so, and here's sort of a parking lot view of the dormitory. So you're seeing it from the backside of this, as if you were standing in front of our nine-one-one EOC building, looking at the back of that, that facility. That's the top view. And then the bottom view is what you would see as you, if you were driving by an airport road and look, you would see the three-story dormitory building and then the connection to the office building and training, training site, classrooms. Here's just a couple renderings of that Swift Water Rescue Facility from like a high-level view. You can see the, the Swift Water Facility and then the, inside of that, the flood village that they'll be able to work in. And that'll have things like, you know, electric poles and manholes that you'll have, be able to, they'll be able to navigate through because those are things they'll see in a real-life environment like they did down in New Bern several years ago when that flooded and then more of an urban environment. And so, and then off to the right was where the Aircraft Rescue Facility. That's where, you know, that'll have the propane or natural gas injectors on it. And so it'll actually turn on, you can create fires. Fires within, on the, on the, on the wings, fires within the engine, fires on the ground as if parts were laying there, fires actually inside it in the galley. And that plane is actually, will be designed to mirror a more of an avi, a commercial aviation on one side. And the other side will have the engine in a wing more like a C seventeen. And then the back of it will have a ramp like a C seventeen. So it's gonna meet the, the demands of the National Guard and military folks as well as your commercial aviation firefighters. So a really neat facility. This is just a closer view of that Swift Water Rescue Facility from, from above and the, and the village. There's your aircraft rescue facility. And then here's some more pictures within the, inside the flooded village part of the middle of that Swift Water Rescue Facility, where they're working on different exercises. And then here's just sort of construction update. You can see this is the site there. The prison's off to your right. Said sort of right and back west. And then seven forty's up to your, up to the east and north of this picture. And, and so that's, that's currently what's happening on the site. And here's another view. You can actually see the prison from this view and get a better idea where it sits in relation to the existing guard facilities. And so that's a, that's about a thirty-four million dollar project, phase one, a hundred percent state grant funded. The Aircraft Rescue Facility is actually supposed to be completed by early twenty twenty-five. And that's because they're decommissioning the one at the Charlotte Airport, Charlotte Douglas Airport that they currently use because they're, that's part of a new runway project and roads, road changes over there. And so they're wanting to eliminate that one there. And so it's really imperative that we get this one open as quickly as possible so that those folks have a place to train. And then the Swift Water Rescue Facility will be later in twenty twenty-five. Phase two, which is the dormitory and seventy-plus beds, state-funded. The office classroom, state-funded. The warehouses, majority state-funded. But a couple of those bays in the decon area will be funded by the county. And so we'll cost-share that warehouse, but the majority of it will be paid for by the state. And then the nine-one-one facility, obviously EOC, Emergency Services Facility will be county-funded. And we don't know costs on those yet because they're under design. And so, but those will be guaranteed maximum price. So they'll tell us what the price is and that'll be what it is. And it'll be a guaranteed maximum price. If there's any savings, we share it in those savings. Another project we have going, we currently have an RFP, Request for Proposals on the Street that was issued on March fifth. Responses are due actually this Friday. Well, we optimistically hope to be able to present or recommend it to the, on May thirteenth to the board. That's if everything kind of works out in terms of getting folks in here scheduled for, you know, interviewing different firms to try to vet them a little before we make a recommendation to you on who we want to use as the desire, the desired general contractor for this design-built facility. The design should be complete in early twenty twenty-five. A guaranteed maximum price presented to you all in early twenty twenty-five. Construction hopefully beginning in first quarter of twenty-five and then hopefully the ninety-six beds could be complete third quarter of twenty twenty-six. And you can kind of generally see right now where we think that likely will be is right, butted, butted up against the ninety-six most recent beds that we're, we're constructing, a couple of different angles of where that, that potentially will, will sit. And then obviously, once you get the ninety-six beds, then you can focus on the old jail section and what we do with that. And so that's part of the, the plan, RFP as well, is sort of in phases. Get one design, but also come up with some suggestions and a master plan of how we deal with the, with the, with the old jail section. Some other smaller projects we have going on as well. Web Road Convenience Site, the land purchase is finalized. The funds to grade and construct the convenience site will be recommended in the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. The Norwood EMS Base Renovations, permission been issued. Renovation, construction to begin in April twenty twenty-four. And that project will likely bridge into next fiscal year. And so it may be that we have to, money that we didn't, don't spend out this year, we'll have to reappropriate portions of that into next year's budget. And then the Clerk of Court Wing renovations at the courthouse, project's complete. There's updated lighting, new flooring, safety and security measures, and enhanced counter area for customer service. And so other areas of the courthouse have, have enjoyed the, the, those, those improvements. And I believe based on initial conversations with other folks in the courthouse that we'll see some requests as part of the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget for enhancements such as this and other areas of the courthouse in terms of lighting, flooring, you know, changing customer service. I know like, for instance, the tax office, then I think they would like to be able to build up their, their customer service window so there's a little more safety and security there. It doesn't go all the way up to the top. And I think obviously, you know, it is, it is, it's a little different than other areas because there is, you know, you have to get through security. But I think there is some concerns there, good volume of money that they do, they do process in the, in the tax office. But other than that, those are our major and minor capital projects that we have that being supervised and worked through our central administration budget. And so, or through our office in terms of supervising and managing them, paying bills and checking with general contractors and other things. So I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have about any of these projects.
Any questions of County Manager Lucas?
Mr. Chairman, I got, I got two actually. The, the emergency management thing, do you have an estimated idea what the economic impact will be to the county for that?
I think it's been done and I'll try to get that for you tomorrow. I think the Office of State Fire Marshal and the state have actually done some economic impact on that. And I'll try to share that with the, if I can get that from Brian Taylor, I'll try to do my best to get that and share that with all the board members.
Thank you. And the Emmett Center there at the Community College, is that under budget, within budget or?
There've been a couple, it's, it's within our budget. There've been a couple, a couple, a few change orders, but not, they're still well within the amount we had budgeted for contingency. So we haven't had to, we haven't, I don't anticipate coming back to the board and asking for more money for that project. Unless something happens with the contractor, God forbid, knock on wood, that doesn't happen. I've been here when that happened with the jail project and that was not fun. But I, I, we should be fine. There should be sufficient funds to finish that project.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Thank you, County Manager Lucas.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, if you would look over your consent agenda, if you haven't already. Is there anything that needs to be pulled or? Okay, motion by Commissioner King. Do we have a second by Commissioner Shudo? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Motion carries seven oh. That completes the agenda. Commissioner Shudo, do you have any public comments?
Yeah, I just want to wish Chris Lambert luck on his, good luck and best wishes on his new position at the Livestock Arena. I think he's a wonderful choice for it. And I wish, I wish David Jenkins well as he goes on to a new venture. He's had a, it's been a, being in public health when there's a lot of keyboard doctors out there, it's been a very rough challenge over the past few years. And I just wish him the best of luck.
Commissioner King? Commissioner Evert?
No, sir.
Commissioner Hatley? Commissioner Barbie?
I'm good also.
Commissioner Crump?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the comment I want to make is we appreciate GHA, what you all do. We appreciate Charlotte Pipe and Foundry. And thank you for what you do. Because if it, if y'all were not here, then Clinton might not have a job collecting taxes. So. Clinton, thank you. Thank you and your staff for collecting as many dollars as possible. At this time, we're not going to adjourn. We're going to recess until four PM on April the eleventh. Is that correct? Yeah, and we're going to meet back here at four PM. Then we're going over to the Community College to meet with their Board of Trustees at five PM. So meeting will be recessed until that date and that time. Thank you.